We are here to reconvene the regular Board of Education meeting for July 28, 2022. Announcements. Well, first we'll do our Pledge of Allegiance and roll call. Dr. Phillips, will you lead us, please, in the pledge?
Sure.
Oh, no. Thank you so much. Okay, and roll call. Clerk Venegas.
Present.
Trustee Barnas.
Present.
And Trustee Pazadi.
Here.
Thank you. And President Wong will be joining us later this evening. Announcements of action taken in closed session. We are actually pausing our closed session. We will be going back into closed session at the end of this meeting. And we'd like to do a land acknowledgement. And Trustee Pazadi, would you read the land acknowledgement for us, please?
Sure. We acknowledge that the land currently occupied by Washington Unified School District as the traditional home of the Patwin people. These sovereign people have been caretakers of the area since time immemorial. Despite centuries of genocide and occupation, the Patwin people continue as a vibrant and resilient federally recognized and unrecognized tribes, bands, and rancherias. Today, we honor and recognize our Patwin tribal neighbors for their contributions as the caretakers of the Sacramento Valley and honor their sustained existence. It is with their blessing and continued guidance that the Washington Unified School District seeks to provide an accessible, equitable, and supportive institution of learning and experience.
Thank you. And now we're at the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Dr. Hildreth?
Yes, I'd like to recommend that we remove item on the Consent Agenda 01C, the Approval Amendment Service Agreement with Performance Fact. In looking at our original approval last year when we started the strategic plan process, the board at that time approved a three-year contract. So we already have a contract with Performance Fact. What we are working with Performance Fact on is if there's going to be any modifications to the contract for year two, which is for the 2223 school year. And we also will are planning to have a study session in September for the board on the implementation of the strategic plan. So we can be sure that all trustees are aware of what this year of implementation looks like, so that you have the level of information you need as we begin our roadmap to implementation this year. So for that reason, I am asking for the Consent Agenda Item 01C to be removed.
I'm sorry, I'm unclear. So you want to remove it and put it into action?
No. So looking, we don't need any action on this because last year-
Oh, we took care of it last year.
We took care of it last year. So there's no need. It's already been an approved item.
Okay.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve with the change of the removal of 1C?
Seconded.
Okay, so moved by Trustee Barnas and seconded by Trustee Pazadi. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I. I too vote aye. Yeah. Okay, so that we do not have any communications and celebrations tonight. So that takes us to association report. Do we have a WSTA report or has one been called in?
There was no communication made in terms of them coming in to report today.
Okay, thank you. Is the same with CSEA?
Correct.
Okay, thank you so much. So that takes us to public comment.
Did we do the, sorry, did we do approval of the agenda?
Yes, we did.
I thought you did the consented.
It was approval of the agenda. We removed the consent item from the agenda and approved it with that change. Okay, so that takes us to public comments. And there are none in the room. And past practice has been that President Wong has allowed comments to be submitted in writing. And my understanding is one was submitted in writing today. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so on past practice, I will read our public comment disclaimer. Members of the public may address the board on topics of our board agenda during every meeting. In addition, during regular meetings, the public may also address any topic within the jurisdiction of the board. Please know the board is listening to your comments but by law cannot meaningfully respond in this form to items not on the agenda. The board may limit the total time for public input on any topic to 20 minutes unless it waives the item, the limit item for an item. Individual speakers may be limited to three minutes to comment on any topic. The board respects the right of members of the public to speak regarding matters within its jurisdiction. However, please recognize that comments regarding students other than the speaker's own children made during public board meetings may be a violation of the student's right to privacy unless the speaker may be legally liable. If you reference a student's name other than your own student, you may be deemed out of order. Furthermore, it is important for the public to understand that negative or derogatory comments made against district employees or others, even those made in a public board meeting, may be actionable civil defamation. Although the board may not prohibit such comments, board policy allows the public to lodge complaints against district employees, providing more opportunity to be heard than is allowed under the open meeting laws that govern this meeting. Okay, Mario, would you please read the public comment for us?
Yes, thank you, President Vice, uh, thank you, Vice President Kirby Gonzalez. This was a general public comment. It was submitted by Gail Costello. Her public comment states, "Thank you. I do not see anything in the agenda about discussion consideration of a fall mask mandate, but families need to know what you are planning to do, if anything. We have seen studies and articles citing all the mental, emotional, and physical damage that mask mandates created in American children over the last two years. We are aware that numbers of COVID cases have increased with the arrival of Omicron BA5. It is more contagious, but it is not more dangerous. It is the equivalent of a bad cold. We are aware that the numbers of COVID hospitalizations and deaths have not spiked commensurably," excuse my pronunciation, "and there are particularly very low numbers of seriously ill young children. I would hope that the WUSD will maintain policies that promote education. We know a lot more about COVID, what it is and is not. There is enough scientific data to ignore overwrought demands regarding masks, especially now that there is talk about masks that cover more of the face and would be even more debilitating to young children." Thank you. There were no other additional pre-submitted public comments.
Okay, thank you. And we do not have a public hearing tonight. So that takes us to end information discussion. One, overview of Washington Unified School District's enrollment and attendance marketing campaigns for the 2022-2023 school year. Executive Director of Communications, Yorgos Kuzanis.
Good evening, Vice President Kirby Gonzalez, trustees. Nice to be with you in this setting again. Feels a little, like I said earlier, like riding a bike. You kind of have to figure out where all the pedals are again. So as we're waiting for the PowerPoint to boot up, wanted to just give a quick broad strokes overview that tonight's presentation is essentially going to be that. A brief overview of some of the work the communications team has been doing over the summer to put together two individual marketing-style campaigns. One specifically focused on attendance and attendance awareness and what we're doing in our district and in our schools to promote that throughout our community. The other is what I would consider a more traditional marketing-style campaign geared towards highlighting the successes of the district, district-wide, and also using, I would say, more traditional and digital ad-buying kind of style campaigns to do so. But the first one regarding attendance awareness is a bit more of a storytelling campaign, which wouldn't necessarily go the route of purchasing ad time and advertisements across digital media and all that. So I'm just going to continue on for the moment. I have the presentation in front of you. If you do have the presentation, it's also linked in the agenda as a hyperlink to Google's slide deck, so you can just follow along from slides one, one through 10. So the first slide is essentially just a quick overview of tonight's presentation. I want to highlight that we currently have certain strategies and communications tools that we use effectively throughout the district. Want to talk about some of these new strategies that I just highlighted in the brief overview and then identify some next steps in terms of expectations for our district. In terms of current strategies, we do everything in terms of traditional print communications, which is what you would normally see in terms of a hard paper copy that goes home, things that we might do as a direct mail or campaign to our households or places of residence for many of our families. We do a lot of things in terms of the digital realm, everything from email marketing communications, district's mobile app, we use social media and our website platforms, all that to convey messages through all those channels as well. And we do do some efforts in terms of marketing, which includes using paid ads on social media, on the web, whether there's publications locally like the West Sacramento Newsletter, there's a publication typically circulates in the southern portion of West Sacramento called West Sac or Southport Neighbors, to clarify. I'm sure many of you received that as well. But we want to think a little bit outside the box and go in a direction that we haven't necessarily done traditionally. And this is also taking a pulse of different feedback that we get from our community when we are out there at community events. We have done almost a bi-annual communications survey to our community as well, where we gather feedback in terms of how are people hearing about our news? How are you hearing about our schools and our district and receiving information? And how would you like that to change? So the next slide, it specifically highlights a challenge. And the challenge would be that even though we implement and deploy a lot of these strategies effectively, there's always a limitation or an extent to where we lose a little bit. And we aren't necessarily bridging that gap for specific audiences in our community. A lot of that, too, can be attributed specifically sometimes to just the capacity of our team to dedicate specific staff hours, resources to specific projects like this, to really dive deep into intentional research and strategic planning, to implement but also put together an ongoing plan for sustainability to where these particular projects aren't like a one-time event. It's something that lives on annually because the district is also not, or the work of the district is also not a one-time event. These are things that we do regularly on a regular basis, and there's new stories to tell each and every year. And we're trying to find new and creative ways to do that as well. So on the next slide, it's Slide Five, if you're following along, you'll see that there's two campaigns highlighted. The first one would essentially run, I'm calling it the mini campaign. It would specifically run in the month of September, either right before the Labor Day weekend or right after. And it runs through the end of September. And that's piggybacking specifically off of National Attendance Awareness Month in September. What we want to do is draw attention to rising, to raise awareness about the importance of attendance in our community, emphasize the link between consistent and good attendance with our students and student achievement, and then deviate in a direction that we haven't necessarily done before. And that's really tell the story of real families in our community, to attach a name and a face to this campaign so that someone who's listening to us, watching or paying attention to this campaign can see the impact that it has, that someone that they can clearly identify with in the community or that they see throughout the community. And this is the one where it's, like I said, the primary focus would be more of a storytelling campaign. There wouldn't necessarily be what we would consider ad buys or marketing buys in that sense. The outcome would be throughout the month of September, we would do a video series where we spotlight a family in the community, a student, potentially a teacher or principal or counselor, someone that has specific roles in terms of getting our students to school, making sure they're attending regularly, they're there on time and ready to go, and highlighting the difference in the impact that it has for a particular student or a family to be in our network, in our system, receiving all the services and supports that come with being in our school every single day. So one conceptual idea that I think will help visualize is, you know, sometimes we have new families that come to our community, either from different parts of the country, different parts of the world, where some of these services and supports are non-existent or they don't have access to them specifically. So we want to try and leverage that opportunity to tell that story of the district being able to bridge that gap and the benefit of being, like I said, in our system and in our network and what that does for a student when they join us either from early grades, from TK kindergarten through high school graduation. So that's what I'm terming as the mini campaign. The larger one, Campaign Two on that same slide, is the one that's more broadly focused on a more traditional marketing campaign for the entire district where we can cover many more topics, many more programs, showcase successes, and potentially pique the interest of other individuals or other families in our community or outside our community that might be at a point in their life where they're looking to make a decision for a schooling option for their, for their growing family. And the emphasis on that would also be on identifying some unique identifiers. So things like the award-winning dual immersion program at Elkhorn Village or some of the stellar, like, student achievements, even from this recent graduating class from River City High School, highlighting things like that to tell the story of the district in a different manner, using a lot of different platforms. On the next slide, I believe my printout is a bit out of order, but I believe you see the one that showcases the partners. To do and under, to really undergo a comprehensive process where we're able to take these two projects, these two initiatives, and take it from step one to completion and execute it thoroughly. Again, we kind of come across some of those limitations where we have limitations with staff hours, resources, and the dedicated time that needs to go into research implementation and then sustainability after. So we spent a great deal of time in the summer reaching out to industry colleagues, other communications professionals in other districts in the region across the state, other communications and PR firms that I'm familiar with, having been in the industry as well for nearly 15 years. And we were able to come across these two companies. Primarily, the lead that we're looking to move forward with is Lamont Digital and then their subcontractor Mosaic Communications.
Be aligned.
Great, thank you. Lamont Digital specifically, as you can see on this slide, it has a list of their clients and other associates that they've worked with before. Their portfolio is pretty expansive, and they've specifically done a lot of similar projects for high-level ranking state agencies and departments. The one that I want to call attention to specifically is Listos, California, or the California All Campaign, that I'm sure we were all familiar with as it was closely also tied to COVID-19 and through the Office of Emergency Services, getting notifications out to everyone statewide in order to bend the curve basically for COVID-19 and getting vital information out to specifically audiences throughout the state that were hard to reach or were inaccessible. And that's due to a variety of reasons, whether it's lack of access to technology, internet, or perhaps they're non-native English speakers as well. So the unique thing that drew us to these companies is that's similar to some of the challenges that we sometimes have in our very own community. We want to think of our audience, our market, as West Sacramento, but within that market, there's a lot of microaudiences as well that have very specific needs and ways that we communicate, or that should be communicated to them and the way that they can communicate back to us. And what these, what this team is really known for is meeting audiences where they are and bridging that gap and then taking the rest of that journey together. And that's really what we want to achieve as well. So the next slide is really talking about the process of what goes into something like this. And again, I'm not going to get into the details tonight. It's meant to be a broad overview of where we're at with these two projects because it's been a summer-long pursuit to get us to where we're at. But the process really with step one, you want to think of it as like a pre-production process where there's a lot of research and conversation that goes in so that these teams understand our community, who we are. There's going to be continuing conversations with the executive cabinet team and other members of student services as well, so that we can make sure that we are checking the boxes on specific things that are necessary in terms of our market and our audience here. And then taking it to the next level in terms of, it says tactical coordination and activation, that's really when the rubber hits the ground. What are we doing when the campaign gets going? And then the ongoing amplification and sustainability is really what we mentioned earlier in terms of making sure that we have an exit plan, that it's not a one-time event, and that because this is going to be an annual occurrence and we want it to be an annual occurrence, that there's a plan for it to happen effectively. And then at the tail end of that, there's also an opportunity for us to come back to the board in the spring and give almost a capstone report of the data that we gathered during each campaign. We can showcase what worked, what didn't, with those, also some experimental kind of strategies to see what tools are actually working in our community for communication as well. And then that allows us to also pivot and reinforce or go a different direction for the year after that. In terms of a proposed timeline on the next slide, which I believe is Slide Seven, you'll see that there was some work done over the summer months from June, July, up until almost August now. The idea is to hit the ground running as of August 1 with the mini campaign in preparations of Attendance Awareness Month in September. I say hit the ground running because that particular campaign is much smaller in scope and in depth in terms of planning and preparation. It doesn't pass any thresholds in terms of fiscal impact for board approval or for any kind of RFP process, anything like that. The other one is a bit larger and more comprehensive, but that, too, doesn't necessarily meet that threshold for an RFP process or anything like that. But we are going to be coming back on August 11 for formal board approval on that larger campaign. That's much more comprehensive. And that campaign, you have to imagine as well, would be running from November through January. And that's also strategically, the district wants to really put ourselves at the forefront of being able to market our district and our schools with the specific purpose of enrollment. There's lots of other educational providers out there, and sometimes they tend to go even earlier before the holiday season. And this is our way of getting out there even earlier, but doing something continuously every week where our district is being promoted and marketed in that manner to draw attention to our schools as well. So with that, the last next steps and expectations, like I said, it's just to get the ball rolling with the first campaign and prepare for September. Come back on August 11 to the board for formal approval on the larger campaign. And then in the spring, we'll come back with a brief report in terms of findings and metrics that we had from both campaigns to showcase to you what worked and what didn't. And then we can always entertain any kind of future steps after that. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Do we have any questions from the board? Okay, Trustee Pazadi?
So in the attendance campaign, are we going to have any sort of, like, disclaimer, please don't send your kids to school sick? I don't know what this looks like when we're advertising out there, right?
So one conversation that I've had with the teams that I mentioned is there are certain caveats or nuances in all of our communities and in our school communities because each one is also different that we want to be aware of, but also paying attention to the fact that COVID is still there. It's a challenge. It's an issue. It's not something that's going to go away overnight. But it's something that we can, in terms of strategic planning on how to implement and put in talking points in a series of campaign talking points, that's definitely one that we can draw attention to because it's also something even pre-COVID that we always wanted to highlight, that you shouldn't come to work or to school sick, even if it was a normal cold or the flu or something else. But definitely, that's something that we can call attention to.
Okay, because like just this year, I got a letter from my daughter who, she missed a couple of days here and there for an illness. And I guess my question is, you know, are we sending out these letters to try and encourage people to, you know, not miss time for their kids in school? But how are we not being hypocritical to ourselves when we're saying, don't send your kid to school sick?
I think another concept that might be helpful as we're visualizing what this might look like is, you know, the aspect of having any kind of symptoms or being sick and coming to school is almost one compartmentalized issue. I know that one downside of the last two years, and I think we can all relate to it, is that there's also this particular aspect of fear associated with coming to a public setting, any public setting, because you might contract COVID or get sick or something else. That's also led to dips, not just in our district, but dips across the entire state and the nation in terms of student enrollment. And there still is that kind of stigma of, should I still send my child to this particular school or back to a public setting, right? I think that's always going to be there. But I think the nature of how we convey these messages, focusing more on the positive aspect of our support system and highlighting potentially measures to mitigate the spread of any kind of, you know, sickness, illness, anything like that, could also be a parallel talking point throughout the campaign as well. Because it's really meant to shine a positive light on the strength, the strengths and the successes that we have as a school district to really support a student from grade to grade and through graduation. One of the other things that that came to mind, and I was just blanking a second ago, I'll get back to it in a second, but it was leading me in a different direction and-
Let me, let me jump in if I could to that point. I think what Yorgos is saying is right. Part of the campaign is, of course, awareness of not coming to school when you're sick. But really, the overall message, and it's been about with the message for attendance even prior to COVID, is just getting back to the importance of attending school, the importance of engagement. And what did we learn during the pandemic about the importance of relationship building and that peer connection, that teacher-to-student, student-to-student connection? You're missing that if you're not in school. And so if you're not in school, that allows us to reach out, our youth outreach workers, to get more information about. Then there are some supports that you might need that we could get. But it really is about attendance is, we can't get to our portrait of a graduate if you're not in school. We can't feed you if you're not in school. We don't know that you don't have transportation if we haven't checked in on you. So it really is thinking bigger and helping our families also understand that part of attendance is the funding. That's, that's part of it. We have to acknowledge that. But it really is about how do we know our students who have greatest needs? We're a Title I district, and this allows our parents to understand that our messages are not just about dollars. Our messages are about-
Effectively quit taking your kid to Disneyland midweek?
Yeah, ski, you know, ski season, those kinds of things that some people might be able to do is, you know, our teachers are wonderful and our teachers give makeup homework, but you can't make up that conversation that happened in that classroom. So getting that kind of message is really the goal.
Thank you for that. And the thought that I had, it just came back, was really a lot of the messaging that we've seen over the last two years about school and school attendance has been more negatively focused. Don't go to school. Don't go for this reason. Don't be in a public setting. The other thing that I was going to say is districts everywhere have tools and mechanisms where, you know, in order to curb truancy and provide some level of intervention, there's a very prescriptive method of sending out notices to families that says if you've missed, you know, one to five days, for example, right? That's just a theoretical example. If you miss one to five, you're going to get this level of a notice. If you miss five to 10, you're going to get that. We don't want to focus on that more prescriptive, more negative or ominous feature that says, you know, you've done something wrong. We want to turn it and tell the story of families and individuals in our school community that are succeeding by being here in person and benefiting from our services and supports.
I think along that line, I might add, and this has been explained, I appreciate it, there's many who are really working hard to follow the rules or trying to, they believe in having their kids in school, their kids want to be in school, and then they're trying to navigate, I don't know what the graphs and grids will look like as we come in, but of what does this look like to send my child safely? So maybe within this campaign, if it's, you know, mommy, I don't feel good. I have a headache. Well, let's do a COVID test and let's do da-da-da-da, you know, to kind of show how you can then say, know that you're safely sending your child to school, might be helpful because it's just been really hard to navigate for families. And I'm sure it's going to change this school year of what that looks like and the matrix looked like, close contacts and whatnot. So just, that's helpful to make sure that they're here, if they understand what does it take to be here in the light of COVID, to, as one piece. And then my question, I really like the idea of educating the community, especially your dates, November through January. I think one thing I would be interested in in the future is why are families choosing to leave? What data do we have? I know if they leave for a charter school or a private religious school, we don't need to know. We don't have to release them. But if they're going to another district, they do have to fill out a form within our district's office. So is that form collecting meaningful data for us to understand what other public schools might be doing and why people are leaving? And then maybe working with admin during that time of November to January, because I know so many others are opening up, they're doing tours, come visit our campus. So what can our admin do as you're doing this to say, give opportunities for families? Sometimes they just need to walk on campus. So how can they do that? So it's not, student learning might be helpful.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right.
Great. Thank you so much.
Okay, so moving on then to information discussion, item number- So moving on then to information discussion item number two, and that is the A through G block grant for Washington Unified School District and Washington Middle College High School, and that is with Assistant Superintendent of Education Services, Mr. Passati.
You turned off the microphone on me. Okay. So a little bit different situation here, you know, getting up here on the podium with all, with all this. I'm going to take a stab at this. I just wonder if I did something early or wrong that made this not work. I'm sorry, I had to, I had to try. Yeah. Okay. No worries. Okay. Well, yeah, so we're going to have to just follow along. So we'll, we have the A through G completion grant that was given to school districts last year. This grant was established to provide support to districts so they could increase the number of California high school students, particularly unduplicated students to graduate A through G, meaning that they would go through a set course of high school classes with a grade of C or better, which would qualify them to go to UC or CSU schools here. So we want to increase that number. Tonight, we're going to just provide a little introduction of this grant, review some of the current needs, and here are the recommendations that we've put forward. I don't even get to say next slide. I have to do it myself. Oh, gosh. All right. So Washington Unified is eligible to receive $589,000, $589,216,000. Washington Middle College High School would get approximately $150,000. This allocation was based on the unduplicated students enrolled in grades nine through 12, as reported in Cowpads last year. These funds are available for expenditure or encumbrance through the 25, 26 school year, which means we don't have to spend all that money that was mentioned at once. Many districts are choosing this, a lot of this information came out pretty late in the spring, and so a lot of districts are choosing this year to be their planning year. And I'll go over kind of what we're, we're attempting to do. So you, we have a few years to actually expend this amount. We started working on this plan because one of the statutes was that we had to have a plan ready by April 1 of last year. That doesn't mean that plan cannot be changed or worked on. However, we were told that we had to have at least a plan worked out. So we did meet with our high school team of administrators at that point to go over some of these details. And of course, one of the statutes of this plan was that we need to present it at a regular governing board meeting. The law did not establish the date by which we did that, but our best practice thought that you should probably hear about it before the school year begins. And so just like a lot of other of these plans that have been given to us by the state, we're supposed to bring this to you at a subsequent, you know, regular scheduled board meeting. So we probably will bring it back for action at the next meeting. So tonight's just information. So to be eligible for these funds, you're, we're supposed to provide opportunities and use these funds where we can either improve the completion rate by giving professional development to teachers, administrators, or staff, also developing plans or tutoring programs to improve the rate, expanding coursework that satisfies these requirements. These, these can be different course reviews, these can incorporating these requirements and graduation requirements in different ways, expanding partnerships with other educational institutions to help us with this. It can also be used for AP fees for unduplicated students. So there's a few ways that this, these monies can be used to help us build our A through Just a little data, in the 21, 22 school year, we know that we had 474 River City High School students that repeated courses from the previous year in which they received a D or F. That is not all the students that receive a D or F. So, you know, we, we, we would say that probably another 400 or so students probably do not repeat a courses, like if they had a D, technically that could allow them to graduate. So they may choose, for whatever reason, not to actually repeat that course. And then some students who have an F may just take it another year as well. So they don't always have to take it the subsequent year. So, but the bottom line is not every student from the previous year who gets an F or a D ends up actually repeating the course. The nice thing about being on a four by four block at River City High School, that's one thing, is that there are a lot of opportunities in the schedule for kids to actually repeat classes. Nevertheless, we do provide other opportunities such as summer school. We use the Edge of Newity program at, in our district, both at, at all our high schools to actually give our students course, access to courses during the summertime, and even many students take it after school. They'll come by to, to try to take and make up a course of some sort. Below, you can see a table that gives you the A through G rate the past few years. We don't have the last years yet, that hasn't come in yet, but just to kind of give you a percent, we're hovering right around, right slightly above 50% the last three years. And our goal, of course, and you saw that in L cap, was to increase that in the next few years. As far as the money goes, the, what we broke down is spending about $100,000 on professional development and then about $350,000 on student support. So student support means it would be investing into these courses and access to these courses for these students to actually make up these classes. We also may need to look at course development, so we've, we've put some funds aside there to see if we, if we needed to do some work there. And that's, the next slide shows you the breakdown for Washington Middle College High School. They're looking about 10,000 professional development, remember they, they did get less of an award than, than the Washington Unified School District. Also 100,000 towards student support. And in addition, for access and course development, they're looking at about $40,000 out of it that they'd like to spend. So for River City High School, we are recommending that we put in procedures that will allow our students to have more access to retake A through G courses. One of the things that we are trying to do is build in more flexibility. Many school districts actually build in these types of courses like that we do, that course access for Edge of Newity and such. Instead of just doing it at after school or at summer school, there are a lot of school districts that actually have built-in sections during the school year, during the regular day, to actually service students. And they find that that's a better way to, to pick up some of the students so that more kids who may have had a D or F can actually make up that class to get a C or better. So that's something that we're going to be doing at River City High School this year. So that's the first time that we've tried something like that, and we've heard good things from other districts. So we'll try it out here and hopefully we'll have this, a good success. We're also looking at finding ways to increase the advising and planning for students in addition to unduplicated students especially, who, many of whom don't necessarily have the same access to the information as, as other students. As you know, we do have a freshman class at River City High School, Building Foundations for Success. One of the aims of that class was to really make sure all students understood the importance of A through G. However, we still feel like that we need to do a better job of that, and there's more work that needs to be done in the guidance sector. So that's something we will be increasing as well. And again, this is in conjunction with other funds. I mean, there are many things that we've tried to do over the years to increase our A through G. There are a lot of things that we try to do to lower the amount of students getting anything lower than a C. So of course, the best way is to reduce the number of kids getting Ds or Fs. We want more kids getting better grades at the first time they take the class. So naturally, there's a lot of our district L cap work, a lot of those funds is geared toward how to get kids more successful the first time. Then we want to have some things in place for those kids if they don't, you know, if it doesn't work out, to have better features to help them get, get that makeup. But again, it's really about the first instruction. So that, that, that's something that our district is trying to focus on as well. We, we've already talked about summer recovery programs and we still want to invest in those. We feel like those have been successful, so we will continue doing that. Washington Middle College High School has some similar features as well. Their staff do meet regularly to talk about A through G and the demographics and comparing their school across the board. They, they are really working hard and have been, and I know that you remember some of these presentations, on standard, standards-based grades. And so that's a big feature for them to, one, reduce the number of Ds and Fs the first time around, really link it to standards. And so that, that's something their whole staff has been training and spending a lot of time on, and they will continue to do so. They also eventually want to implement support periods for their students. They hadn't put that in there for this year, but that's something that they could add in at a future time. And like us here in Washington Unified, they're doing it in conjunction with a lot of funding sources as well. Just kind of wanted to highlight some of the different supports interventions that would be included in our plan, which is scheduling a lab-like support during the actual regular school day. That's, that's a big change. We've never done that before. Again, we want to have the before and after school homework periods, the independent recovery, A through G through Edge of Newity, and summer school intercession. All those things will be available. We've been doing that, but the big difference, of course, is scheduling that lab-like support during the regular school day. And of course, we will be continuing to plan and assess after, you know, each year or during the year. And it's very likely that we will adapt the plan in the future to another level, but this is where we are right now. And that is it for tonight. Thank you. And is there anything I can clarify for you?
Okay. Are there any questions? Yes, trustee Barnes?
And can you go back? I was, when you did the division of the, or the breakdown of the funding, or student services, or sorry, student support versus A to D access and course development, I wasn't sure of the difference between the two. It seems like access and course development is a part of student support. So what does student support look like?
Student support is more like the last slide that I showed you.
Okay.
Where you create these places for students to get help and intervention.
Okay.
The after school, the summer school, the, the lab inside. The course access and development is actually working on the courses that the students are taking. So it's more the staff working together, maybe with a higher education institution to kind of look at the courses, see what courses we need to develop. And it could be courses that we need to develop that will support students as well. It may not just be directly, because it's, it's not just that they failed English. There may be some things that we need to add into the curriculum at River City High School.
Got it. Thank you.
And if I can add to that, another example might be, we know we've discussed in, in our equity work, making sure that students who are in the AP classes represent the diversity of the school population. And so one example of, of course, development might be if you are, you know, the, the AP classes are challenging, so you might develop a course that students can come to on a Saturday morning for support, so they will be successful in that AP class. So like a scaffold or something, that's where we could use, where we could use these funds to pay teachers, to develop what that would look like, provide transportation on Saturdays, different opportunities.
Good thing. Yes, trustee Passati?
Yeah. So I noticed that only $10,000 was allotted for Washington Middle College High School teachers for professional development. If, I mean, that doesn't seem like a lot of money for PD, but granted, it's a smaller school. If they wanted to, I guess, get additional PD, could they go over to River City High School to get more PD?
Yes. Yes. So, and again, I want to highlight that part that says in conjunction with other funds. So, you know, the, the, the end game is for them to be successful at Washington Middle College High School and in, and of course, at River City and Yolo High School, the students and the staff, we want them all to be successful. So there are other funds that work in conjunction with this to make sure that they're successful. And we, we definitely encourage collaboration between our teachers at, at all, at all our high schools.
That's a good question. My question is, we may not already have this data, and I know that you share with us regularly breakdowns of how our students are doing and, and what they're taking. Do we have any breakdowns of who are our students that are getting the Ds and Fs and who are our students that are doing retaking courses in terms of our, the percentage on duplicated and whatnot? Do you know if we have that?
We, we do. We can get that information for Ds and Fs.
Okay. That would, I think that would be nice for me anyways, as we have this conversation. I know you said it's coming back, just to see who are the kids we're talking about so that we know.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Great. Thank you.
All right.
Okay. And that takes us to consent. And as a reminder, one C was removed. And does anyone else have any changes to the consent? 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 I'm a little tongue tied today. Thank you. Agenda. No. Okay. Can I have a motion to approve? Okay. Moved by trustee Barnes.
Second.
And seconded by clerk Vanegas. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye to vote aye. The consent passes. And now that takes us to action items. So action item one is the approval of contract services with Wallace School and Associates for Geotechnical Engineering and Geo Hazard Services for the Westfield Village School Modernization Project. And this is Assistant Superintendent Business Services, Monique Stovall.
Thank you. Good evening. This evening, we're bringing forth to you approval for a contract related to our Measure Z Westfield Modernization Project. This contract is to analyze the soil of the property to make sure that there aren't any unexpected things that may affect the integrity of, of the project. The cost of this contract is 23,000, 23,600, and we are requesting your approval.
Okay. Are there any questions? Do I have a motion? Okay. Moved by clerk Vanegas.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Passati. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye to vote aye. This is exciting to move Westfield forward. All right. Yeah. Okay. And next is the adoption of resolution 2223-47 for temporary inter-fund transfer of special restricted fund monies. And that is again, Assistant Superintendent Business Services, Monique Stovall.
Thank you again. This is an annual resolution that we bring to you. It is to basically protect for potential cash shortfalls in any of our funds. We transfer money over, waiting for maybe payments. Typically, this is done with food service budgets or, excuse me, food service funds because their reimbursement, to be able to get their revenue, kind of takes a while. And so we want to make sure that they have the cash available when they get their revenue, they return it back to the general.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay. Do you know if we have a legal obligation to read this resolution?
I do not know if there's a legal obligation.
Okay.
And does it need to be by roll call vote or?
I think because it's a resolution, it does have to be roll call vote. So I will read it and then I will do a roll call vote, just to be on the safe side. So resolution number 2223-47, resolution to establish temporary inter-fund transfers of special restricted fund monies, whereas the governing board of any school district may direct the monies held in any fund or account may be temporarily transferred to another fund or account of the district for payment of obligations as authorized by Ed Code Section 42603 and 42603.1. And whereas the transfer shall be accounted for as temporary borrowing between funds or accounts and shall not be available for appropriation or consideration, or considered income to the borrowing fund or account. And whereas amounts transferred shall be repaid either in the same fiscal year or in the following fiscal year, if the transfer takes place within the final 120 calendar days of the fiscal year, whereas amounts transferred shall not exceed 75% of the maximum monies held in any fund or account. Now therefore be it resolved that the governing board of Washington Unified School District in accordance with provisions of Ed Code Section 42603 and 42603.1 adopts the following authorization for fiscal year 2022, 2023, for, to temporarily transfer funds between the following funds, provided that all transfers are approved by the superintendent or his designee, or her designee, or their designee, we need to change that language. And that is General Fund 01, Charter Schools, Special Revenue Fund 09, Adult, oh, is this going to be? Okay. Thank you for making that larger. Adult Education Fund 11. Adult Education Fund 11, Child Development Fund 12, Cafeteria Adult Education Fund 11, Child Development Fund 12, Cafeteria Special Revenue Fund 13, Deferred Maintenance Fund 14, Capital Facilities Fund 25, Special Reserve Fund for Capital Outlay Projects 40, OPEB Fund 20, passed and adopted by the Washington Unified Board of Education. Okay. So this is a roll call vote. Trustee Barnes, clerk Vanegas.
Aye.
And trustee Pisati.
Aye.
And aye to vote aye. Okay. And that takes us to board governance. And item number one is clarifying the candidates' filing dates for the 2022 Regular Board of Education General Election. Dr. Cheryl Hildreth.
Thank you, Vice President Kirby Gonzalez.
I'm sorry, we're going to back up just a minute.
I apologize for interrupting. The previously adopted resolution still needed a motion and a second. We only took a roll call vote?
You're right. I just was sensing the support.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to approve?
I move.
Thank you very much. All right. So trustee Pisati moves. Do I have a second?
I second.
Seconded by clerk Vanegas. And once again, the roll call vote, aye. And clerk Vanegas.
Aye.
Aye. And trustee Pisati.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much for that correction. And we are, yes, and aye as well. We are. We're a little out of practice. And reading that long resolution's roomy. So now we're back to board governance, clarifying candidates' filing dates for the 2022 Regular Board of Education General Election meeting.
Thank you, Vice President Kirby Gonzalez. The purpose of this item is to clarify some filing date for candidates who are interested in running for school board during the 2022 Regular Board of Education General Election. At our Regular Board of Education meeting held on June 9th, the agenda was published with the following candidate filing dates, which stated they were from July 11th, 2022 through August 5th, 2022. We found out that this information was incorrect, and we clarified with the Yolo County Elections Office that the actual candidate filing dates are July 18th, 2022 through August 12th, 2022. So we are clarifying this information for the boards to bring to the boards' attention tonight, and we will ensure that these dates are also clarified in any future notices going forward.
Great. Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve? No, we don't, because this is board governance information. Never mind. All right. Number two, approval of Washington Unified School District Annual Resolutions for 2022, 2023 School Year.
Good evening again, trustees. Tonight's purpose for this item is really a piece of housekeeping. So as you're familiar, there's a variety of diverse opportunities throughout the school year, throughout the months, to celebrate specific days, weeks, months, occasions, topics, or causes through the adoption of a board resolution. Attached to this specific board agenda item is a list of approximately or exactly 27 resolutions that are typically agendized in a specific month. The board takes action on them, and then you read them during that particular month. And then we share that information out with the community, our staff, administrators as well at school sites, in order to incorporate some of these topics into campus activities or learning activities of that nature. The goal of tonight is to really front-load these resolutions to today for formal board approval for the entire year. One aspect of this is to essentially streamline the process of meetings throughout the year, but also more importantly, to be able to strategically give this information to all of our site administrators at the very beginning of the school year so that they can more strategically implement any kind of instructional activities or campus activities that follow along with these specific dates and occasions throughout the school year.
Great. Okay. We will now read all 27.
That would be the other caveat, is we do not have to read all 27.
All right. Just kidding. Okay. This is fantastic. Can we have a motion to approve all of these resolutions?
I move.
Okay. Moved by clerk Pisati and seconded by clerk Barnes. And all those in.
We're all clerks.
Oh, and we. Oh, what did I do?
You called me clerk Pisati and then her clerk Barnes.
I know. For those that are in their room, it's kind of hot in this chamber. And it's, okay. All right. Thank you, trustee Pisati, seconded by trustee Barnes. And this is resolution, so we will go that route. Trustee Barnes. Okay. And clerk Vanegas.
Aye.
Thank you. And trustee Pisati.
Aye.
And aye to vote aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. And that takes us to board and superintendent comments. Dr. Hildreth.
So I want to officially welcome everyone to the 2022-23 School Year. We are very excited to welcome students and staff and families back to our campuses. Our teams are working diligently to ensure that everything is ready for August 10th for the majority of our schools. And then Washington Middle College starts on August 15th. We actually had a really productive meeting today. It was our first meeting with our school leaders all day today, focused on how we are going to implement our strategic plan, looking at school goals, looking at student achievement data, setting SMART goals, a roadmap. And it really was making sure that everyone has the tools that they need to start the year off and know what we're going to focus our time and attention on so our school leaders are ready. I know that our facilities team is out and working to make sure fences are painted and weeds are gone, and the school is a welcoming environment. We have a new transportation supervisor in place, and so we are making sure we have updated routes for information. Our HR team has done a fabulous job, making sure that our vacancies are filled for all of our positions, but we do have an intentional focus on vacancies and making sure we have the least amount of vacancies in our classrooms so that our students, especially our littles, who this might be their first time on a big kid campus, are welcomed by a familiar face who will be with them all year. That really is a priority. And I think there's just an excitement in the air. We're also making sure that we are keeping in touch with Yolo County Office of Education and Yolo County Public Health so that we can send out a communication next week to all of our staff and our parents about what our COVID health and safety guidelines are going to be, so everyone is clear on what the procedures are before school starts. So we are really have a focus on a great opening. We're looking forward to meeting with our employees, our WSTA employees on Monday, the 8th at River City High School, and then our CSEA employees on Tuesday, August 9th. And we're ready. So that's it. Looking forward to it.
Great. Thank you. Trustee Pisati.
I don't have much. I just wanted to piggyback on what Dr. Hildreth said on the meeting on the first days for both the teachers and CSEA. Let's remember this year to bring breakfast for both if we decide to do that, so we don't have any harsh feelings spread out throughout the two bargaining units there. The only thing that I just wanted to comment on, because it's been a lovely summer, and it's been quiet and peaceful relatively speaking, is that I know August's, our August agenda looks pretty full. And on the future board agenda items, we have project labor agreements set for August. I've already talked to Dr. Hildreth about this, but the recommendation from the facilities committee was to do a special board meeting so that the entire board can get more information on project labor agreements instead of having it in one meeting where it's, you know, combined with hours-long of other discussions, right? So this will just be a short discussion that is isolated just to PLAs and a special board meeting that way, because we only have one meeting in August. So that's basically all I wanted to highlight, and that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Barnes.
I'm excited for school to start. I hope everybody's had a fun summer, because I have. And I was driving past, all I'll say is I was driving home and got to see Riverbank put up all of their welcome signs, and they're excited for to have students back. And it made me excited again. And they have a really nice welcome sign in a lot of different languages, which is what I totally love about this district, that we are inclusive. And I think it's really amazing and thoughtful. And then the one that I love, that I'll just read really quick, is it's in their, in the green, white, and yellow, in their Riverbank Otters color, and it says, "Think Before You Speak." Is it true? T is, is it true? H is, is it helpful? I is, is it inspiring? N is, is it necessary? NK is, is it kind? And I just love that. I think it's really great that we have such great teachers and staff willing to work with our kids and help implement thoughtful and kind ways to help us raise them all. So yay, school's starting again. Maybe my kids won't be so bad. Just kidding. Anyway, so that's it.
Thank you. And very much our clerk, clerk Vanegas. What an only.
We are, my comment is, let's go. It is, there's excitement. I've had the opportunity to meet with other districts, other leaders around California, and just the, just the shared experience of, we're ready. We're ready to learn. We're ready to teach. We're ready to serve. So I'm with it, and yeah, let's go.
Great. We had, it's been a while. We haven't been together for quite a long time before this meeting. And we did also visit, they had the summer school showcase for our dual immersion students, our second language students, and also our students receiving special needs support. And trustee Barnes was also there, as was President Wong. And it was, it always is really incredible to see the way that Washington Unified runs summer school, because not only is it really meaningful for the kids, and not only are they saying, when you ask them what they are enjoying, they have a long list of things to tell you about what they're liking in summer school. The room is filled with their artwork. It's just a really, it's a really special place to be, and many districts cannot say the same. I feel like we're really, Washington Unified is really a leader in that work, thanks to our incredible staff here. And it's treated as a, again, a rich environment for students, but then a teacher institute almost, where the teachers are coming to really gain new strategies. They do PD every single day together, and it's not the typical, you know, long haul, hot summer sitting through. They are really like filling their buckets with their PD and having incredible conversations that then they're taking back to their schools for the school year. And so I always love seeing it in action. It's really, really special. But what was especially meaningful this year is that Washington Unified's opening the newcomers program for our students who have only been in the United States for a year or two, with the intent that this is a temporary place to get a lot of intensive support for a year and then go back into the general ed classroom. And we saw one of those classes in action, and who will be the teacher this year of that program. And she called getting to be a newcomer teacher a once-in-a-lifetime experience that she is so thrilled to apply for, and that she cannot wait to serve these students. And I thought that was really special, the veteran teacher, to the words that she used to describe the students that she has, is very privileged to teach, and it was really thrilling. So thank you to everyone for working so hard, doing so much great work. And yes, we hope you had a little break to pause and reflect. It's been a hard few years. This is our first time in these chambers, so it's a little clunky, getting back and used to it. But it's not our first time together as a school board. We came back when we had the majority of our staff come back, and we came back with them to have our in-person meetings safely. And so, but it feels good to be here as well, with all of you. And the last, I have one more thing, and then we can go, is as we start our year, this is a board who has passed resolutions on making sure to inform our community of gun safety storage. And so I want to make sure that that goes out with our beginning-of-the-year information to them, along with all of the great things, Dr. Hildreth, that you said will be going out, that I know they're anxiously waiting for, the safety updates and other pieces as well. So if the gun storage can be part of that, that would be wonderful. Okay.
I just wanted, because I forgot to mention it, I just want to give a quick shout-out to the maintenance and facilities team. I was over at Bridgeway the other day, and I saw them painting the wrought iron fence and the new gutters as a part of our Quick Strike projects that we approved, you know, in the last school year. Saw them actually getting put up and painted, so I just wanted to give a shout-out. Thank you so much. You know, these things, often we don't get to see them done because they happen during the summer. So it was very nice to see, you know, people out there working on our facilities and still working hard during, you know, an off time. So just wanted to say we appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. So we have our future board agenda items, which are the safety update in August 2022. These are all, of course, 2022 coming up. We have, too, the update on the school assessment of student performance and progress, which is our CAS that is coming up in August. We have the PLA agreements, as was mentioned, at a special board meeting. We have the 45 budget revise in August. We have Future Educators and Aspiring Administrators Program in September, and we have the unaudited actuels in September. Are there any other agenda items to go? Okay. Well then, seeing none, we are going to adjourn back into closed session, and we wish everyone a wonderful evening, but we will report out when we come out.